Call the order. This is the Mayor Council meeting for April 30th, 2024, starting 7:00 PM. Would the clerk please read these statement of complaints?
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law, duly announced, advertised, and posted in the municipal building. The meeting will adjourn no later than 10:00 PM unless a majority of the council members are present to vote and extend the time.
All rise for the Pledge of Leaders. Councilwoman Tallamini, would you lead us to the Pledge of Leaders?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Clerk, please call the one call.
Mayor Kamala.
Present.
Councilwoman Gofredo.
Here.
Councilman McCann.
Here.
Councilman Pignatelli. Councilman Saliani.
Here.
Councilman Slusinski.
Here.
Councilwoman Tallamini.
Here.
Do I have a motion excused, Councilwoman Pignatelli?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All favor? Okay. Okay, Mayor's report, it's pretty lengthy, but I think we'll get through this relatively quickly. Paving, I know there's a big, people are asking questions about Lakeside Boulevard, Monthegan. In the condition of the roads in town, I'm happy to let everybody know that we've moved the paving from the fall to the spring. RFQs or fairs were out on the street, and we're open today. We will be awarding the bid today, hopefully at tonight's council meeting. We're going to have our first pre-construction meeting starting next week, so we can really hit the ground running with this program. And Monthegan, Lakeside Boulevard, and the reserve entrances will be a priority once we get this program going. For those people that live down by Truman, Roosevelt, Stone Fence, as you're aware, Public Service has been working in the area probably for the last year. I'm happy to report that they have completed all the work down there for the gas main replacement. We've already had meetings with Public Service and our engineer, and they're looking at paving probably in the summer to replace all the roads that they have opened up in those areas. Sidewalks, for the people that live on Seminole, right by the lake, you'll notice from Hiawatha Boulevard to Calumet, the new sidewalk is going in, so you now have the ability to walk from Hiawatha all the way up to Height School, so that's being completed as well. We expect that to be completed probably next week, weather permitting. Patriots Way Bridge, we have good news. It may not seem like it's moving quickly, but the utilities are being secured at this time. The gas has already been capped off, and we're making progress with that. We are, we are still getting calls from residents concerning Glen Gray at 202, and the signage and speeding. All this equipment has been ordered. Once all the equipment comes in, they will be installed, you know, on Glen Gray, that and with the reserve, and also down, going down through Navajo and that area. Also paving of the exits, like I said, is going to be a priority with Monthegan and Lakeside. And we are having bi-weekly meetings now, as this project is really starting to ramp up, and it's really, you're going to see, be seeing a lot of movement in the next several weeks to a month. Bush Plaza, as you know, this, you've probably noticed, the brick and lace have already been installed down there. They're starting to do the surface work for the park. The clock and flag pole, all the equipment's been ordered at this time, and that project is very weather dependent. We were hoping it would have been wrapped up by now, but you know, we've had a lot of rain, and it's really slowed down the project. On April 20th, we had the townwide cleanup. We had 30 volunteers, plus our OEM team, and the Girl Scouts. They cleaned up Great Oak Park, Stewart Woods, the recreation complex, Potash Lake, Skyline Drive, and the Van Allen House. And I had the pleasure of working with the Girl Scouts on the Van Allen House, and the good group of kids and the parents helped out. We cleaned out all the beds, trimmed all the brush back, took all the garbage out, the bricks are gone, dropped the sign, so you know, we're making progress on the Van Allen House. And I want to thank everybody that came out for that. And also, there's going to be a Mayor's Blood Drive Tuesday, June 25th, 2024, from 12:30 to 4:30 PM at the Senior Center. I just wanted to get that out there right now, so that you can start playing, and I'll mention this again next month. And that's all I have for my report. And let's see. Now make a motion to open a public comment.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Anybody wish to address the council? Just need your name and address.
Frank Rataco, 51 Lakeshore Drive. Good evening, Mayor and Council, and to everyone who came here tonight. I'm a resident of Crystal Lake, I've been to quite a few of these lately, so I just wanted to come here and, you know, continue with my appeal to the town, to help the homeowners in the, in the Crystal and Mirror Lake neighborhoods, try to secure a future for the lakes that, you know, that basically like will allow us to maintain the lakes, you know, take care of them, most importantly, fix the Crystal Lake Dam, which is going to be a huge cost. And right now, as, as you're well aware, the lakes are, are under threat. They're under threat, both lakes are really under threat of potentially being sold, being sold to developers. One, Mirror Lake in particular, has already been listed. So I just wanted to reiterate a couple of points that I've made at these meetings previously. First of all, we feel, you know, the lakefront homeowners, there's a group of us that have, that are working together to try to work towards a solution with RML and with the town. We feel very strongly that both Crystal and Mirror Lakes are very, very important parts of the town's stormwater management system. We're, we, the lake itself absorbs a huge amount of stormwater in every storm. The dam is repeatedly damaged and blocked and clogged with debris. A lot of the town's stormwater runs through our backyards, it causes flooding, it causes this damage, which we are having a hard time figuring out how to, how to repair. So we are appealing to the town to please, you know, acknowledge and take some responsibility for the damage to the Crystal Lake Dam. Repairs to the Crystal Lake Dam will enable all parties, all interested parties, to really move forward towards a better solution. We could, you know, let people out of RML who want to be out of RML, we can shrink RML to maybe a smaller size, that can then manage the lakes at a lower, at a lower cost. This is what we're, we're trying to achieve. We also want to remind the town that, you know, of course, we are taxpayers of the town, we pay our taxes, our taxes have gone up significantly over the years, as well as our fees to RML. Our taxes really do go to pay for infrastructure repairs in the town, and we really do feel the Crystal Lake Dam is a part of that infrastructure, and should be repaired with the use of taxpayer dollars, the way that, you know, the Patriots Way Bridge is, and other, other storm drains and things like that in the town. So that's a big part of, of our appeal. So just lastly, I want to state, you know, we, we have already had some initial meetings, both with the mayor and members of the council, as well as with RML. We feel that they've been productive, we feel that there have been signs of a path forward towards a future that maybe we can all be happy with. At the end of the last Mayor and Council meeting, Councilman McCann said, you know, that there was some interest on the part of the town to maybe start a committee to look into this matter, and that was also very encouraging to those of us who came out to the meeting that night, and also tonight. I have sent a letter to the mayor and council on behalf of the group of lakefront homeowners that have been working together towards a solution, so we're really hoping for a response from the town, and hopefully sooner rather than later, a follow-up meeting to discuss possible paths forward. And if I may, one more thing I was going to talk about, but I was happy to hear it mentioned in the Mayor's report, the speeding up and down Lakeshore and Navajo due to the closure of the Patriots Way Bridge. I walk around the neighborhood a lot, people are literally flying up and down that road, and somebody's going to get hurt, and glad to hear that that's being addressed. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rataco.
Hi, Liz Harletta, 161 Lakeshore Drive. Thank you, and all of you, for your patience over there. We won't stay for the whole meeting, don't worry. Appreciate it. That's why I just jumped up here. So I'm here, I just want to echo everything Frank just said. I'm here on behalf of Crystal Lake and the homeowners and the taxpayers, to ask, really, you know, a next step is to have a meeting with us, so I appreciate a committee being formed. I know we've sent a follow-up email as a group, so to ask when that meeting might happen, so that we could discuss it without just three minutes, one person speaking, right? Like to have an actual back and forth discussion. And on a secondary note, I've been to quite a few of these meetings since I moved to Oakland in 2012 for various reasons, and I've never been able to park in the parking lot right here. And I noticed that there's a lot of those spots taken by, you know, I don't normally mind walking, it was a little difficult tonight, but the walk from the Senior Center's not that big a deal for me, but there's a lot of stuff parked there that maybe doesn't need to have their permanent home there, just so you, you know, maybe more homeowners would be likely, or better able to attend the meetings if there was better parking available. But really, I'd like a meeting with the mayor and council for the Crystal and Mirror Lakes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Josh Lines, 89 Lakeshore Drive. I'm just here to reiterate what Frank was saying about Crystal Lake and Mirror Lake, and the fact that they're both in peril at this present time. I watched with my nine-month-old son, a male bald eagle teach his eaglet, I had to look that one up, how to hunt for fish, and I watched the eagle catch its first fish in Crystal Lake. Now, I come from the city, and to me, bald eagles were fiction until I got out here, and I was sitting there, and I said to my wife, "Do you see that right there? What is that?" She said, "That looks like a bald eagle." And I said, "It couldn't be a bald eagle, this is New Jersey." It is, and it's one of two mating pairs that we're aware of, and when you don't see them, you see the ospreys, and when you don't see the ospreys, you see the blue herons. So outside of the fact that we do absorb a huge amount of Oakland's rainwater runoff, and outside of the fact that it certainly will benefit everyone to address Crystal Lake's dam, it, in my opinion, is crucial that we protect the lake moving forward, so that my son can grow up and show his son the bald eagles 10 generations away from now. I'd like to thank Councilman McCann for suggesting the committee. I think that's a great idea, it's a way to step forward, and I hope we can all come to a resolution that works for everybody. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Josh.
Yes, my name is Richard Perides, and I'm at 13 Calumet Avenue, Mirror Lake. And again, you know, you reiterated on what we, we live, you know, 18 years on the lake and watching beautiful lake turtles, and fishing with the kids, and it's, it's emotional when you look at what may be taken away for families and for the town, and I'm glad to see such a nice turnout, you know? It's, it is, it's emotional to think that we may lose a wonderful asset to this community. Thank you very much.
Come on, we're neighbors, let's do it together. My name is Wayne Loringer, I'm on 49 Lakeshore Drive. I will back up everything that was said prior. The bald eagles are one of our favorite things to, to watch out for out of our window, and our, it's fun to reach out to my sons and have them come out and watch that as well, along with the fishing and everything else that we enjoy there. I love seeing my neighbors out there, Frank and both sides of me. We love meeting out there and conversating, and I think the open conversation needs to continue, and we have to take care of our, our resource here. It's a hidden gem that the town can really hang its hat on and really, I don't know, just as previous men said, it is emotional to, to think of what could be, so.
Thank you, neighbor. Thank you.
Good evening, Ben Cassio, 45 Lakeshore Drive, which is right next to Wayne, where I've lived for over 40 years. That bald eagle, by the way, sits in a tree right outside my bedroom window, overlooking the lake, and I have some great, great photos. My way of background, when the highway was first proposed, Mike McNally, who was an engineer in town, I don't know if you remember him, and I went down to DOT and spoke with the engineers. We had a number of meetings with them because we were concerned about the route and what it could possibly do to the lake. At the conclusion of those meetings, they acknowledged that, yes, it will in fact affect Crystal Lake, however, they're not responsible for anything beyond 500 feet from the highway. That rude awakening does not help the fact that we are in fact getting sediment from the highway, as well as all of the street trains from Jeff Mogul all the way down to, to, on, along Rabbit Pole Valley Road, and everything west, including the Lakeshore Drive, goes into that lake. When I first moved there, the center of that lake was 30 feet deep. It is now six feet deep. That didn't just appear out of the sky, it came from all of the street trains and the highway. The, the state and the municipality may disclaim any responsibility, but I think under the circumstances and the fact, you owe us something to work toward an improvement of this area. Thank you very much.
Adam Melken, 147 Lakeshore Drive. Thank you for continuing to, to hear our pleas. I think over the last several meetings, we've established the utility of our lakes, Mirror Lake, Crystal Lake specifically, and moreover, where they sit in the borough's published stormwater management plan, literally right in the middle of it, key component. No progress has been made in our discussions yet. We appreciate the council hearing us, we appreciate Councilman McCann's suggestion that a committee be established, but I think it's important to remember that the decisions we're making now and over the next few years here will vastly impact what Oakland looks like in 10 years. This is something that the council has been talking about, and for good reason. Given the criticality of the issues, we hope to begin a more formal dialogue with the council sooner as opposed to later, and we do believe a private-public partnership to address this has tremendous promise for success, and can potentially head off all kinds of litigations in the future, and that's something we all desperately would like to avoid. I'd like to use a current example to highlight the contradiction of, of the borough's current policies that relates to our, our lakes. A lot was just cleared, and a foundation poured for a new construction at the bottom of Navajo on the corner of Lakeshore Drive and Mohawk. Yes, this is the same intersection, which has taken beating after beating, paving after paving, detour after detour, so on top of all that, we now have a lot full of dirt sitting, sitting up above that. I'm sure in order to build that house, the developer went through a lot of processes to get licenses and fees and permits paid to the town, obtained by the town, for the right to build that. Literally 100% of that property's runoff goes directly into the private property of Crystal Lake. In addition, the home's septic field is lake-adjacent, and I'm curious, based on the borough's stance, that these are private lands that they cannot interact with or interfere upon, how does and when does the borough consult with that private landowner when it intends to issue permits, take fees for those types of constructions and for those types of developments? The town is then more than happy, you know, to take in the new tax revenues established from this new development, the soon-to-be new homeowner, and those that are taking care of, of Crystal Lake, the waterways, continue to absorb the costs of the damage that's incurred by these developments. This is just the most recent example. I know RML had no part in the planning of the development, no say in the whens, the hows, the ifs, the whys, no consideration in terms of any sort of compromise, or how do we work together in a public-private way, so that we can allow those types of developments to easily happen, and we can absorb the runoff as a constituency, so that we can continue to, to support our, our development while at the same time being mindful of these resources. We continue to put this on a small set of homeowners who've maintained and managed the system, and again, the town's happy to take the tax revenues, and the pattern has gone on for literally decades. And the pattern has been so blatant in its approach, that the borough has never even done so much as offered to relieve these homeowners of the tax burdens associated with 25 to 30 acres of land sitting under the water. Even something so small to say, "Hey, we recognize you, let us help with this burden," something so small where the town could easily help relieve these homeowners after all these years, you've turned your back on, and continue to turn your back on. This is water-covered, environmentally sensitive, life-filled gift that's been given to Oakland Space and Recreation, and, and we continue to push it to the side. Let's stop doing that, let's come together, and I'd like to know, we're all asking, when will the borough step up and support the homeowners that have consistently supported the borough for decades? Where's the reciprocity? And I'm curious if anybody on the council will go on record as it relates to their thoughts or positions on what the future of these lakes is going to look like, and how we might be able to work together to set aside the differences that this town has had over these waterways and, and make it right, because the town needs these, these assets, and it would be a shame to continue letting the taxpayers, who've been bearing this weight, fight amongst each other while the town points and says, "It's private, it's private. We'll keep dumping all our stuff there, but it's private. We'll keep allowing development and runoff, but it's private. You can't have it both ways." So work together with us in cooperation, we've cooperated by doing our part for all of these decades, do your part in giving us some relief in stepping in and helping us. It's right for the town, it's right for the taxpayers, and it's right for your 10-year plan, which is so important.
Good evening, everyone. Trudy Derbyshire, 181 Lakeshore Drive, and I just wanted to put another face to the flood. I'm on the side of floods. So when we get all the rain and all the runoff, I invite all of you to come down to my house, you're more than welcome, you can help us put up the boards, you can see what happens. And when Adam was speaking, he was talking about the council turning their back, and I believe in the past, the council did kind of turn their back on Crystal Lake. However, I believe, and I hope I'm right, that this council is looking at us with open eyes, and you're all looking at a way to help us and to protect these assets that are so beautiful for Oakland, for everyone to enjoy. Thank you.
Mark Skanga, 141 Lakeshore Drive. Does that address give you a clue as to where I'm going with things? Thank you so much for listening to us, thank you for the thought of the council, of the...
Committee.
Committee, thank you. I knew it had a C in it. I wanted to share a personal thing to do with the way the water that comes into our lake affects us. I have a small dock at the end of my yard into the lake. That dock is supported by three, you know those beams, what are they, six-by-sixes? You can get them at any of the lumber yards. They were put into the lake with three-foot-deep concrete footings. A few years after that, they started to move, all three of them moved, all in the same direction, finally to the point where I was worried about standing on that dock. So during lockdown, a friend who's handy came over to help me, and we got into the lake. At that point, the water was lowered, and we tried to move these back into the position they were. We couldn't move them at all. They were, I was so confused, what's going on? How were these things moved this way? Well, when I got to looking at the, at the bed of the lake, I got my answer. So much water and so much runoff came from the building of the highway, and all came in one direction, because that's the nature of what happens when things come down from the, in particular, from Almond Brook, that they actually pushed my footings. This is not, we didn't just set that on the dirt. Three-foot-deep concrete footings were completely pushed, and grown men with sledgehammers could not move it, we had to redo it. I just bring this up to point out, Crystal Lake, and I'm sure in its own way, Mirror Lake, are taking a tremendous toll in what happens in our town in terms of water, in terms of runoff. Please consider us as part of the town, and we look forward to making a solution for this. I thank you all.
Hi, my name is Reema Mason, I live at 114 Lakeshore Drive. I'm across the street from the lake, but I'm also the president of Crystal Lake Community Beach, and I bring that up to, just to make it known that, you know, everyone's talking about the enjoyment of the lake, and it might be perceived that it's just the people who are on the lake who enjoy looking at it, but through Crystal Lake Community Beach, and you know, the fact that that is open to anyone in Oakland, the whole town is able to enjoy that lake, Crystal Lake, and obviously, you know, the point's been made about the, the runoff from all of the storm drains and the wear and tear that's had on the dam, and that's why we're asking for your partnership in addressing that problem that has plagued our community for more than 10 years now. So I'm here to support that plea, but also to make it known that, that, that lake is open to the enjoyment of the whole town, it is not just the people who live on the lake. So again, we look forward to meeting with you and partnering in solutions. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Sorry, I have a little bit of laryngitis, so please just bear with me for a few minutes. My name is Eileen Perry, and I live at 321 Elane, and...
This is Carrie, 141 St. Sue Avenue.
We are co-chair of Access for All, and I don't mean to interfere with the Lakeshore and the lake things, I'm sorry, but this is, this is close to our hearts right now, and I thought it would be important that we come and introduce again, as I know that it's been said before, to everyone here and the council. It's being recorded, hopefully people at home will listen and understand who we are and what we do. The committee serves as an advocate for individuals with disabilities in the borough, and we help to assist in gaining better access to services in the community. Our goal is to enhance their quality of life, so that they may just participate to their fullest in everyday activities that everyone enjoys in the community. The committee identifies existing programs and opportunities, and develops and coordinates education and civil activities within the borough. This is done in partnership with the county and other organizations... This is done in partnership with the county and other organizations and in other municipalities, not just Oakland. We report to the mayor, council, and our liaison in matters which will affect the people with disabilities that are in our town. In addition to advising the borough, we can provide information about resources as well as planned events that we have, which promote the activities for all to be included. The committee is comprised of residents of Oakland and representatives of the Borough Council and the departments. We are a group of cross-section community members and we each provide diverse experiences, either personally in our families or some kind of connection that we bring to the table, our skills to make sure that Oakland is available to everyone. Access for All, that doesn't mean just us, it means everyone. And that's what's important, to make sure that everyone understands it's not just us and it's not just those whose families are affected. We need everybody. Right now, we're at six members. And we're only a year and a half, maybe, two years, that we've picked this up and started to roll with it. Municipalities such as Maual, they have a program that you would not believe. Some of the other towns, they don't have anything. So as a community project, I was voluntold by Carrie to be involved in this committee and I'm very happy to be here. But six people can only do so much. We don't expect everybody to sign in and be as much of a part, integral part of it as we are, but if you can help in any way, any shape, any form, anything you can do, the information that we would offer you would be our email. That would be OaklandFA@gmail.com. You can also call me personally on my phone, 201-456-0533. And last of not, but least, donations. We are desperate for donations. We are going into our own pockets, which we don't mind. We're also parents and family members. So we're going into our own pockets to make sure that the kids and the adults that are in this organization have what they need. Donations would be so, so deeply appreciated. And you can let us know by my phone number or an email. I thank you for your time. Oh, I'm so sorry. Excuse me, I just want to make one last note. Tonight, we have a new member. Isabella, if you would stand up.
Almost.
Almost. Someone who has volunteered to be a part. We're waiting for approval from the mayor. But this is, this is Isabella and she has asked us if, you know, we could use her help. So we thank you very much. That's it. Thank you.
Mayor, may I add something?
Sure.
So Access for All is my love. I was happy to help start that. In addition to what you guys mentioned, you know, it's really important that townwide activities are open to the public. Anybody can attend the Oakland Carnival, that they're there for anybody with special needs and have that special day, that hour and a half for them. And I just, I just love Access for All, so thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it.
Anybody else want to speak?
Hi, Alexandria Evans at 141 Lakeshore Drive. The session is ending, isn't it, very soon? You get a half an hour to talk? So what I wanted to do is, there's a lot of people here who haven't had a chance to speak. And if you don't mind, everyone who this touches on the lake infrastructure, please stand up. So I just wanted to, you know, say a few words about how we are, you know, reiterating what everyone is saying. We are in need of speaking with the borough, talking about a solution. We all recognize that the lake offers a wonderful recreational venue, but it's definitely a functional issue also for the borough. So please, let's get together. We sent a request. When are we going to meet? We haven't heard back yet. I'm hoping the committee is starting to form and that we'll hear from you all soon. Thank you.
Joseph Furia, 24 Hiawatha Boulevard. I think a lot of you heard what I had to say last time. I made a plea about the environmental importance of Mirror Lake and I think I want to spend my time today talking about maybe some actions that you can take, just, you know, ideas that came into my head. You know, there's more than just two lakes here in Oakland. Just off the top of my head, I know there's Hopper's Pond, there's Hubert Lake, there's Ramapo Lake and Mirror and Crystal Lake and there are probably another, I have no idea how many more bodies of water there are. You all deserve protection. We don't deserve to single out RML, but there are things you can do, maybe laws that you can pass that would affect Crystal Lake and Mirror Lake and other lakes in this town and would benefit all. One idea that I had, you know, we, these lakes do need maintenance. We talked about how there is silt that is accumulating above Mirror and Crystal Lake. These lakes do not, they cannot be landlocked, essentially. We need road access to every lake so that the people that own the lake have the ability to get trucks and heavy machinery into the lakes to properly maintain them. One of the problems that we see with the sale of property on Mirror Lake is that there is land on Mirror Lake for sale and then there's the lake itself. If that land sells separate of the lake, this lake is completely landlocked. There is no public access anymore to the lake where a truck could come in and maintain it. That seems to me to be not right and it's probably something that applies to every lake in this town. There needs to be some sort of public access to that lake for the purpose of maintaining the lake. Other things that you can do. We talked about RML and how they don't have the funds needed. Mayor, we had a meeting several weeks ago where one of the things we talked about was there is a public fund that New Jersey runs that could be used to pay for the lake. This is obviously run out of Trenton. I need you to talk to your fellow lawmakers, our representatives, anything that you can do to get money from Trenton in a program like that to help pay for the lake, would reduce the burden and get the Crystal Lake dam repaired, which actually resolves some of these issues. Maybe it buys more time, maybe it doesn't. And the last thing is, after this meeting last week, there was an email that was sent out from RML talking about, I don't believe everything you hear, that might be a little bit hyperbole, but there are certain things that were said between myself and my fellow, you know, lakefront homeowners and RML, trying to come to a resolution of how can we solve this problem. One of the things we said was, we want to purchase Mirror Lake, but in the end, we still need RML and its ability to gather a fee from the homeowners to help pay for those lakes in the future. We want the people who don't want to be part of RML out of RML. And we would, I don't want to start taking money from people who want to be out of RML now to pay for that lake. But if Oakland Lakes forms as a corporation, takes ownership of the lakes, the first thing RML can do is say, oh, I don't own any pieces of land, I can close as a corporation, they can walk away. We wrote a letter saying that we can't have that. I want to work with you, we want to own the lakes, we want to come up with a new structure, but don't play us for fools. You are not going to sell the corporation out from under us and leave us with no way of raising revenue. There are lots of things that were written in the letter to that nature. We want to essentially use RML to fund the lakes in the future and not to do that until we can get all the homeowners who don't want to be in RML out of RML. That is the intent. And RML is not, essentially, they are twisting words around and making it publicly known. People are watching this on TV and maybe hearing these words for the first time and I think that's very important that they hear this. There can be a middle ground solution. We have to work together to do it. And we have to stop hiding behind words and, you know, being deceptive because there's way too much of that that I see is going around right now. Another example is the insurance costs on the lakes. The insurance cost could be cut. We could save tens of thousands of dollars a year if these lakes were transferred out into a separate corporation. Because they are, the insurance, to my understanding, and again, I'm not an RML member, is based on the number of homeowners in the organization. They see 1,500, 1,600 homeowners and they charge the insurance in accordance. If you were to take these lakes out of that corporation, they would now only charge on the homeowners on each lake. So now 1,500, 1,600 members went down to about 100 members or less. I think it's 84 on one lake and 21 on the other, if I'm not mistaken. I might be. But that's a real cost savings that is not happening right now because we're arguing about whether we want to keep the lake, it's better to get rid of the lake, and we could have made progress towards saving money. And we're all so defensive that we're not even allowing the common sense, something that's good for all of us, to happen. And this is the type of stuff that needs to stop. Anything that this council can do, I heard that you suggested a committee, Councilman McCann, and I very much appreciate that. Anything, any help that we can have to essentially talk together, come to a common sense solution that works for everybody will make the situation better and faster. And that's all I have for you today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Not seeing anybody. We have a motion to close?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, moving on to approval of minutes. March 4th, 2024, this is a special budget meeting. Do we have a motion approved?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All favor? Okay. March 6th, 2024, special budget meeting. Do we have a motion approved?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. Minutes of the March 26th, 2024 council meeting. Do we have a motion to, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
April 9th, council meeting. So moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
And April 9th, executive minutes. Do we have a motion approved?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All favor? All right. Okay, moving on to special announcements, appointments, and raffles. We have raffle license RL 149A for the Oakland Volunteer Fire Department Carnival Games on June 12th, 15th, 2024. We have raffle license RL 1499 for the Wyckoff Reform Church for a 50/50 to fund charitable activities on May 14th at Portabellos. We have raffle license RL 1500 for the John Robert Wood Memorial First Aid Squad for a 50/50 supplies and materials for the December 6th event. We have approved a social affairs permit for the Fathers Club of Oakland, 33 Ramapo Valley Road, for the family barbecue and beach for June 1st, 2024, from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. to support scholarships in Indianapolis High School. And also, we have approved weekend construction requests by Concus Corporation to begin to work on Saturdays on the bridge from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. from June through August. And the last one is solar landscape letter of support. Do we have a motion approved?
So moved.
Do we have a second? All favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we're going to get to appointments. Access for All. I'd like to put forward Isabel Restivo. Isabel, welcome to Access for All. For the zoning board of adjustment, I'd like for the council to consider John Grifredo. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Second? All favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we're moving on to the budget presentation. This is going to be a summary review of the 2024 budget and I'm going to turn this over to our CFO, Mr. David Young. Walk us through it.
Thank you, Mayor. Do a quick overview. We've gone through a couple of budget presentations, so I'm just going to hit the highlights. Funding for the current fund budget, this includes the library, presented in the F-Budget up to adoption at $34,685,000. Will be an additional amount of $2,885,000 for appropriation for the water utility and $534,400 appropriations for the sewer utility. The current fund budget is up 1.82%. The tax levy required to support this budget will be $18,038,000. This is up 2.59% over 2023. Due to a shift in ratables from residential to commercial, the actual assessed increase for the average assessed value of the home will only be about 2.05%. Miscellaneous revenues and billable taxes are basically flat and surplus utilization is up 5.4%. The budget as presented maintains the existing level of service, provides a slight increase of funding for capital investments, as well as money to embark on some redevelopment activities. Excluding grants and shared service, which have the offsetting revenues, the budget is up $755,000. This is up 3.3%. Solid waste in insurance cover about half of that, $330,000. The budget is compliant to both the appropriation and the levy cap.
Thank you, David. And if most people realize, we did have two meetings on this on March 20th, on March 4th, 2024, special budget meeting. We also had another one on March 6th and we did cover all this information as well. There's a presentation, maybe you'll go back on YouTube or it should be online. With that, we are now going to, we have 24140, which is the resolution authorizing fiscal year 2024 budget to be read by title only. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Roll call.
Councilwoman Grifredo?
Yes.
Councilman McCann?
abstain.
Council President Salianni?
Yes.
Council Miss Losinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
I just want to say thank you to everyone that was involved in creating this budget. They do such a wonderful job every day. Mr. Young, as our CFO, he does a fantastic job. He's taught me so much about the budget and it's a hard job and he's thinking 10 years ahead. It's not about today, it's about where we're going to be 10 years from now. And he makes sure that he keeps us in line when we get a little crazy. And he, but I just want to say thank you to, especially David and the whole staff and everyone that put this together.
Yes, thank you. That's it. Okay, now, this is the actual 24141, adoption of the budget. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, now with that, motion to open to public.
So moved.
Do we have a second? All favor?
Aye.
Okay, at this time, the floor is open to the public. If anybody has any questions or wishes to discuss the budget prior to us approving. Not seeing anybody, do we have a motion to close?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. Roll call. We're actually voting on the budget.
Councilwoman Grifredo?
Yes.
Councilman McCann? Council President Salianni?
Yes.
Council Miss Losinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
Okay, so we now have our budget for budget year 2024. Okay, so we now have our budget for budget year 2024. Thank you all for the hard work on this, and Mr. Young and our borough administrator and members of the finance committee. All right, the next thing we have on the docket is the Bergen County Open Space Park Improvements. This is 24-142, resolution authorizing grants to middle to Bergen County Open Space Park Improvements. Mr. Coons, would you walk the council through this?
Sure. This is an annual grant program run by Bergen County through their Open Space Trust Fund. What we'd like to do this year, Recreation has been working with a group of residents on a comprehensive plan to renovate the DeWia Playground. This would include a brand-new safety surface, new equipment, sun shade, garbage receptacles, benches, basically redoing the entire playground. So the grant application would seek funding for half of that projected construction cost for that project.
Do you have any questions? All right, do we have a motion to approve Resolution 24-142, authorizing grants to middle to Bergen County Open Space Park Improvements?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
At this time, we're going to open this for public comment from anybody from the public wish to comment on 24-142, resolution authorizing grants to middle to Bergen County Open Space Park Improvements. Do we have a motion to open?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
If the public wish to address this Resolution 24-142. Not seeing any, do we have a motion to close?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
At this point, we have a vote for 24-142, resolution authorizing grants to middle to Bergen County Open Space Park Improvements. Roll call.
Councilwoman Grifredo?
Yes.
Councilman McCann?
Yes.
Council President Salianni?
Yes.
Council Miss Losinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everybody. We're moving on to resolutions. 24-134, authorized revised Oakland Frank Lake Center local sewer agreement. 24-138, award contract Chatham Lamparello, Mallon, and Caparuso, PC, tax appeals. 24-139, award contract Cleary Jacoby Alfredo Jacobs LLC for tax appeals. 24-143, GADA change order. 24-144, certificate of approval of occupancy refund. 24-145, authorized refund of recreation fees. 24-146, authorized grants to middle NJEC Trails Grant. 24-147, authorized grants to middle NJEC Pollinator Grant. 24-148, award bid 2024 road program. 24-149, award contract Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan. 24-150, award contract Wood Waste Storm Water Prevention Plan. 24-151, award contract plans and specifications for paving of Yautau Avenue. 24-152, authorized accrued sick time payout for Robert Hinson. 24-153, resolution confirming submission of fiscal year '25 request for congressional-directed spending to Congressman Bill Praskorrel for PFOA treatment at Soons Field. Does anybody wish to pull any out?
24-151?
151. Anybody else have anything they wish to pull out? Not seeing any, I'd like to pull out 24-153. All right, with those two pulled out, do we have a consent agenda from 24-134, 138, 139, 143, 144, 145, 146, 147, 148, 149, 150, and 152? Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Grifredo?
Yes.
Councilman McCann?
Yes.
Council President Salianni?
Yes.
Council Miss Losinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
Okay, Councilman Salianni, 24-151, award plan specifications, Yautau Avenue repave.
I just wanted to walk through why is this different again from the road project? Mr. Coons?
Sure. So this project, which would repave Yautau Avenue from 202 up to Page Drive, is backed by a NJDOT trust fund grant, about $207,000. Anybody that's gone through that approval process, the DOT, the plan inspects, and I know the county's going through it right now with trying to repay Franklin Ave, it can be rather time-consuming, and it would delay the project essentially if we had included it with the road program this year. So we didn't want to hold up the road program, so we decided to bifurcate these projects and do this as a standalone endeavor, so as not to hold up the rest of the work. All right, so as of right now, it is our plan to have this done in the fall. Again, that's sort of dependent on how quickly NJDOT reviews our submissions and gives us approval to go out to page.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve, 24-151?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Grifredo?
Yes.
Councilman McCann?
Yes.
Council President Salianni?
Yes.
Council Miss Losinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
All right, I pulled out 24-153, where this is the submission for fiscal year '25 request for congressional direct spending for Congressman Paskorrel's office for the PFO treatment. I received a phone call Thursday at 4:00 from the congressman's aide stating that the window is open now for direct request for spending for local constituents and towns. I reached out to you, our borough administrator, Friday morning, and also reached out to Boswell Engineering so that we can start this process because the window closes tomorrow. They gave us three days nationally for anybody who wanted direct spending appropriation to go through their congresspeople at the federal level. And I just want to really bring to the attention of residents that these guys have been working on this over the weekend and the last couple of days, and we are going to indeed meet that deadline so that we can put in for the grant for the rest of the Soons well to have all the water treatment put online. So we're obviously working as hard as we can in whatever avenues we have available to us through spending and grants, and I want to just thank you guys for really putting this through. Anybody have any questions on this before we go to the vote? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve, 24-153?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Grifredo?
Yes.
Councilman McCann?
Yes.
Council President Salianni?
Yes.
Council Miss Losinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
Okay, on ordinance, we have none. We have work session, 2024 capital ordinance. Mr. Coons?
Thank you, Mayor. So now that we've wrapped up the budget adoption process this evening, what we would like to do is proceed with a capital ordinance to implement the capital plan. The budget included $1.3 million for the capital improvement fund, and we had previously provided a schedule of the proposed projects and purchases that were contained in this year's plan. Since that time, there have been a couple of little adjustments. There was an OCC project that's been up off the draft that's included for $25,000 to replace the programming and voting board equipment. We're swapping out one project, so we have to do a little bit of funding for establishing digital plan review in the code enforcement office, which is kind of in response to a DCA mandate and regulations that have come down over the last year or so. So the program that you have here relies on the capital improvement fund, with any amount of funding that was put into the budget, as well as about $65,000 in the Open Space Trust Fund to help fund a couple of projects at the recreation facility, and about $100,000 from our storm response reserve. That's where we sweep unused snow removal funds into for future use. Utilizes about $100,000 of that funding for snow removal equipment for DPDW. It also continues our annual allocation for replacing fire apparatus to try and keep doing that on a pay-as-you-go basis as well. So what we would be bringing forward at the next meeting with your concurrence is a capital ordinance for all of the fully funded items. Everything in this plan, with the exception, or possible exception, of the annual road repair program would be fully funded. And then we'll come back to you later on when we have a little bit better handle on how we're going to treat the road program for this year. We'll also come back regarding the water and sewer items. So this is just primarily being funded out of the current, the capital improvement fund.
So, do you have any questions for the borough administrator?
No.
Not seeing any? Thank you, Mr. Coons.
Okay, we'll bring forward an ordinance then for introduction at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coons. Okay, new business? Anybody have new business?
Mayor?
Councilwoman?
Yes. So I'm reading this agenda, and I know I read it yesterday and the day before, but it looks like there may have been an error of some sort, that there was a second public comment listed. So in case, I would like to make a motion to open it up to second. I know that's not in our bylaws, but in case anybody was waiting for the second open public comment.
Councilwoman, that second open public was for the Bergen County Open Space Park ordinance, it had to have a public open.
I'm just reading it a different way, and I see what you're saying.
Right, it's just listed below instead of above. So under the budget, there was a public open, and then under the second one, there had to be a public open, which we had. And nobody wished to speak. So it's not like a second public open, it was just with regards to this particular resolution.
Just in case anybody read it that way, could we?
Make a motion?
So moved.
I'd like to make-
All favor? All favor?
What do we, what do we move?
Second public.
Second public session at the next meeting.
At the next meeting?
Yes.
All favor?
Aye.
Anybody else for a speak?
Mike 1034, Hopper Street. Thank you for opening it up. I hope this becomes a regular occurrence to go back to the second open. I think it's nice that we can have a meeting, listen to what happens, and at the end have a chance to speak again. But something was mentioned about open space for the rec field. I'm unfamiliar with what we're doing, so I'd like to speak tomorrow about that.
Sure.
I'm not sure what that's about, but thank you for the opportunity to speak at the second open. Thank you.
Anybody else? Not seeing anybody, motion to close? No?
Hey, my name is Justin Lee, 7 Benir Street. I am the owner of Cusala Care, the cannabis cultivation company, opening up down the street and on Moller Road. And I just wanted to come and remind everyone that we're still here, we're still constructing, and we're still moving things forward. We hope to be in more communications about when we will be on the agenda for that final resolution. And then also, just wanted to mention that today, the federal government actually rescheduled cannabis to Schedule III. So that means that it is agreed upon federally that it has medical use and that it has, you know, benefits medically, and that, you know, hopefully it will be more integrated into society in a responsible and beneficial way. So, yeah, thank you. And like Mr. Guadagnino said, I really hope that these second public comments are more common because I think that format is, makes sense, you know, to be able to comment on what we heard without the two weeks in between, and maybe some things would be forgotten about, you know? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Not seeing any, motion to close?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, new business? Anybody have any, we do new business?
That was new business. That was new business. I'm running old.
Old business, forward to planning committee. Councilman McCann, just tell me, are you ready for this, or are you in a week?
No, we have to, I have to meet with our planners first off, and like some guys are here, why don't you talk amongst yourselves and see who you would want us to consider to put on the committee from your group? Would you mind doing that?
I'd be happy to.
Okay, that'd be great.
Sure.
Councilman, I would like to join that committee. I know last time-
Okay. No, no, you said you were gonna do it. Yeah. We just, our planner has got a million things on his schedule right now for all the towns that she's in.
Okay, any other old business?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up, last night at the red meeting, we were talking about the tennis courts with the Fox, and maybe checking Franklin Lake ordinance, how they do their tennis fees. Can we just make sure we keep moving forward with that and see what we can do about using Fox to get on the tennis board access?
Sure. Okay. Anybody else have any old business? Not seeing any, borough council liaison reports, we'll start with Councilman Grifredo.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing much to report for Shade Tree, I did my report earlier this month. Next meeting will be on May 6th at 7:30 at the Senior Center. OCC, they did a beautiful video of the mayor and council's work on the dump, as well as the citizens and other people that were involved. So the video will be airing on Saturday and Sunday at 9:55 a.m., 1:15 p.m., and 3:15 p.m. And also Monday through Friday at 12:15 a.m., 7:15 a.m., 9:15 a.m., 2:15 p.m., and 6:15 p.m. And 10:15 p.m. OCC's next meeting is on May 6th at 7:00 p.m. here in council chambers. Access for All meeting, nothing new to report, reported on that last meeting. Their next meeting will be May 1st at 7:30 p.m. at the Senior Center. That's all.
Council Miss Losinski?
Thank you, Mayor. From the Green Team, this Saturday, May 4th, at 7:30 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., they will be hosting the Great Oak Park Bird Watching Walk with Rick Wyman. You can reserve a spot on Eventbrite at oaklandspringbirdwalk eventbrite.com. The rain date is Sunday, May 5th. Bring your binoculars and water, this will be fun. Also, first Sunday hikes continue on Sunday, May 5th at 9:00 a.m. They meet at the lower lot on Skyline Drive. This event takes about three hours to walk through Oakland's beautiful trails. Registration is required, and you can, this can also be found on the Eventbrite site as well. The group continues to seat volunteers, and if you're interested in joining this great group, contact the chairwoman, Alison Fleeson, at green tree at oakland nj.org. From public safety, let's see, during the month of March, officers conducted 408 motor vehicle stops and issued 422 motor vehicle summonses. Officers also made one arrest for possession of narcotics. From the library, yoga with Sonia continues throughout May on Tuesday evenings at 6:30. They also have two sessions of children's yoga with certified instructor Jamie on Saturday, May 4th and the 11th at 10:00 a.m. Registration for both of these are required. On Sunday, May 5th at 3:00 p.m., the OPL is thrilled to announce the return of the Ramapo Valley Chamber Ensemble to the library stage. This is a fantastic group of talented musical artists, and they encourage everyone who can register and attend this program. The OPL would also like to remind the public that they have much more besides what is available inside the library. They also offer a host of digital products that get the, they get you free eBooks, digital audiobooks, streaming music, and movies, and more. Call or stop by the library or check out their website for more details. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman McCann?
Yeah, on the issue of public safety, you'd have to be, have your head in the sand to notice what's going on in the country right now, all of the news with regard to institutions of higher learning. We have residents here in our town that have students, they go to Columbia, go to NYU. My wife was at Columbia for, I don't know, 25 years, 20 years or so. My youngest daughter graduated at NYU. I'm also a product of one of the schools that have been in the news with regard to the anti-Semitic treatment of some of the students on their campuses down at U Penn. Having come just a week ago from a service down there, from a memorial service, and I'm like professors. I don't know how you, how we can sit by as, whether we're an Oakland residence or we're Americans and watch what's going on with the violence that's being perpetrated under the guise of dissent. First Amendment is very strong in this country. In fact, we're the only country in the world with a First Amendment. But what's going on there is not First Amendment protected speech, it's violence. It's hatred, and it's a support for a terrorist organization named Hamas. Hamas, on October 7, changed the game in this country and in the world. And were an open attack on Israel, essentially trying to start another pogrom. And now today, the students and the agitators that are participating with them on these campuses deny that this even happened. And I just want to remind people that in the 1930s, we saw the exact same thing happening. And people, whether it was the local council, school board, didn't say anything. They just sat, said, "Oh, it's got nothing to do with our town." Well, I spoke to some residents from Oakland, whose students go to these schools, and they are appalled about what they're paying for. And I just want to say that I condemn the treatment of any minority community that is being targeted for violence and hatred because of who they are as human beings. It's disgusting, and I want to call out the leadership of these universities. I'm glad the president of UPenn, my alma mater, stepped down. She should have stepped down, she should have never been there in the first place. We now have a new president at Columbia, who has set deadline after deadline after deadline, and it's just let it go by. Weakness brings on nothing but more attacks. Appeasement doesn't work, World War II taught us that, history has taught us that. So I can, I request, just from this little Council Chambers, that the president of Columbia University immediately step down. I joined Congresswoman Elise Stefanic from the Republican Caucus in a congressional Republican delegation in her request to have her step down. And I pray for the officers that will eventually have to intervene to ensure the safety of all the students in those campuses. And finally, to those who are the George Soros-funded agitators, who repeatedly have participated in, going back to the 98, 99 percenters, the BLM movement, the violence that they brought there. It's the same group of people, it's funded by the same dark money. It's all open source now on Google. And we have to wake up, and we have to stand up for those who, and stand in solidarity for the only democracy in the Middle East. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Salianni?
The pleasure of attending the Board of Ed meeting yesterday, where they presented their budget. If you go online for the, this was the K-38 Board of Ed. If you go online to the, it's oaklandschoolsnj.org, a copy of the presentation will be there. I do want to single out Ms. Net Wells, the admin for the K-38 schools, she did a phenomenal job presenting the budget for the K-38 schools. For Flood Commission, our next meeting is May 13 at 7:30 p.m. There's no reports we had at the meeting, but the next meeting is May 13, 7:30, they are looking for another member on the Flood Commission. On the, on public events, there's a lot going on in the near future. We have the Memorial Day Parade, which is May 28 at 1:00 p.m. If anyone is interested to support, if you want to enter a car or march in a parade, pre-trude, please reach out to Mame Schwartz Fisher. Her email is antimame1953@yahoo.com, that's antimame1953@yahoo.com. Also, Public Events Chair Chaparro asked me to highlight that the carnival will be from June 12 to June 15. So is that time of year again where the carnival will be happening? Wristbands will be the same each night, $40. You can pre-buy wristbands for $35 a week prior to the event. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Talamini?
Yes, the Arts Committee is very busy. They will be, we will be having Intro to Improv. It's a six-week workshop to take you through the basics of the Make It Up art form. It will be Tuesdays at 7:00 p.m. starting on May 21 at the Oakland Senior Center. Sounds like a lot of fun. Now, there's going to be a Writers and Artists Showcase presented by the Arts in Oakland. We're going to have a digital zine, it's a magazine. So we're looking for you to submit original spring-themed poetry, short fiction, artwork, and photography to be published in the Oakland Zine. It's just a different way for artists to get their stuff out there. The grand opening of the Arts Pavilion, free concert at Great Oak Park in Oakland, 12 to 5 p.m. on Saturday, June 8. There will be four hours of food, music, and harmony. There will be also, who's going to be there? There will be great bands, including The Core, Mizzilli, and No Picnic, and much more. Also, Mark Skagna will be performing there at the picnic. And there will be monthly open mic nights at Real Brave Stage last Thursday of the month, 7:30. Info on the Arts page or Borough website, the Arts is A-R-T-S@open-nj.org if you'd like to contact them. And then Recreation, May 31, Home Run Derby, all ages are welcome. That's always fun to go out there and see, see the people participate. The younger kids are fun, the softball players are great. I love watching Ali Babini hit home runs. That's always great. June 1, 9 a.m. is the Parade and Fever Pitch, that's also a fun day if you've ever, if you're a part of the baseball and softball recreation, that's a really fun day, you march down, we have a ceremony, and then there's a whole bunch of stuff to do afterwards. There's, you know, just some rides and some food. It's a fun day. Also, on June 1, it's a full day of baseball and softball tournaments for childhood cancer awareness. Be raising some money for that. And tonight, you have until midnight to sign up for Open Camp. That way you're guaranteed a spot. If you don't sign up by tonight, then you'll be put on a waiting list, and you can still sign up until May 31. Full sports registrations are now live, so make sure you sign up, and your kids, and you can enjoy recreation as much as I have over the years. And thank you to all the committee members of the rec, they do a great job, and thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman, bills to be paid.
Total bills to be paid, $1,025,548.12 So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Gofredo?
Yes.
Councilman McCann?
Yes.
Council President Salianni?
Yes.
Councilman Slusinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
Okay, the next Borough Council meeting will be held Tuesday, May 14, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. in the Borough of Oakland Municipal Court, Council Chambers. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you, everybody.